Naive.
I'm gonna take the under on eight thirty.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January twentieth, twenty fifteen, and this is a Moscow City Council meeting. And we will start off with John. You want to lead us in pledge? Start with, please.
Do you please stand? Join me in the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the general public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Before we start with our agenda, I have a few remarks that I'd like to make about the terrible tragedy we had happen in our fine city ten days ago. Our city is healing from the three senseless murders that happened ten days ago. And I gotta share with you some of the things I want to say. EMTs, our first responders, fire department, city police, county police, Idaho State Police, as well as our region across the border with us, Whitman County Sheriff's Office, Pullman Police, as well as Washington State Patrol, did a fabulous job in stopping this guy on the tenth before any more destruction could happen. Now, with that being said, I've talked to hundreds and hundreds of our citizens this past ten days. And with, and it was a tough week for everybody. It was a tough week for me. It was a tough week for our city. It was a tough week for everybody, well, people in this state. And of course, we had moments of silence that was issued by our governor, Butch Otter. And we've had a number of letters and condolences from various communities throughout our state as well. But I gotta share with you, one of my feelings is the strength in this town and the citizens that live here, just absolutely amazing. And I witnessed that Saturday myself, being at this various services, as well as our Martin Luther King breakfast on Saturday morning. We have a strong community. And out there in television land, absolutely, we work together, we make things happen. This is a strong community. And when something goes awry like this, we band together and we work through whatever it is we need to work through to move on. So with that, I want to thank everybody for their patience and understanding and love that was in this community this past ten days. With that, I'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, Dan.
Okay. Dan made a motion to approve the consent agenda as is, with Wayne making a second on this. And I will take the roll, starting with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. We will move on to item number two, which was staff recognition report. We will not be having tonight, so we will go on to item number three, mayor's appointments. And I have four appointments, some of them are city council members here. Dan, Chris Scanlon is the nineteen twelve Center Facility Committee. Walter Steed, nineteen twelve Center Use Committee. John Weber, Urban Renewal Agency, which is a two-year term. And Steve Drouin for the Urban Renewal Agency. And I would entertain a motion.
Is John a one-year or a two-year?
Two.
Because I'm sitting in the two-year seat.
Two. You have one year left.
You have one year left under two years.
We're leapfrogging? Okay, gotcha.
It converts, once you, your appointment to the two-year, to your second year, then the mayor makes your appointment to the replacement two-year term.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve those appointments.
Okay. Wayne made a motion to approve.
I second that.
Art made a motion to second. I'll start the roll with John Weber.
Mr. Mayor, comment?
Okay.
If I may. Um, I will vote to support this, but I would like, in the future, to see, and I realize the city council members are statutory in terms of being appointed to this, but I would like to see some experienced, either real estate or developers or construction people on the URA board. I think that we could use a little bit of that type of input on that board. And since the people appointed to that board are approved by this council, I feel a need to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. And that will clearly be taken under consideration by all that are up here at this podium. So I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay. So all of those are approved and forwarded on. Okay. Item number four, public comment and mayor's response period. This is, we allow always fifteen minutes for this, which sometimes is used and sometimes is not. If you would like to speak to this, please come forward to the podium and announce your name, as long as something is not pending before us tonight or in front of planning and zoning or board of adjustments, you're free to tell us what's on your mind. Seeing nobody rush to the podium, we'll move on to item number five, which is a public hearing. Proposed amendment of Title Four, Chapter Six for the alternative front yard requirements. Michael Ray, you had the podium, sir.
Thank you, your honor, council members. I wanted to start with just asking that you please bear with me tonight, just feeling a little under the weather, so. Before you tonight, we have a proposed legislative amendment for the alternate front yard setback requirement, currently within the zoning code. And so this began with the twenty thirteen council goal, which was to expand the perceived downtown area of Main Street from E Street to the South Cuplet. And that was through the construction of streetscape improvements and also the evaluation of zoning and development standards within that corridor. And so out of that, when we had reviewed the zoning standards, the first item was residential uses and commercial zones, to incorporate more of those uses. And we had passed an ordinance late last year, which did just that. And the second aspect of the zoning standards for this goal was a reduction in setbacks for the motor business zoning district. And when we had taken a look at, and currently the front setback is ten feet, when we had taken a look at the majority of the properties within the motor business zone, which are generally located along the highway corridors, realized that ten feet really isn't a whole, you know, not a great distance, especially when you have speed limits of thirty-five, forty-five miles an hour, and the sidewalks are pushed right out there to the street. And so in order for pedestrian bicycle safety, as well as future expansion of those roadways, we decided to take a look at maybe an alternative within the zoning code to cater to that north Main Street corridor. And the Planning and Zoning Commission had discussed the possibility of the alternate front yard setback. And they did that on October twenty-second, as well as the November seventh meetings. And looking at the alternate front yard language, basically, it just caters to residential zoning districts. So it only applies to those zones. And basically, it lets you take the average, so say you have a whole street, a whole lot of properties on the west side of the street, typically setback ten feet from the front property line. Well, let's say the zone requires a twenty-five-foot front yard setback. So this basically allows you to take the average of the two principal structures on either side, which would be ten feet in this case, and that would be your front yard setback instead of the twenty-five-foot front yard setback for that underlying zoning district. So we looked at this, basically eliminating the residential aspect and allowing it to all zones. And so this would carry over to commercial as well. The proposed amendment before you tonight basically strikes residential from the language, also includes a provision that the zoning administrator may grant modifications to the front yard setback of new principal buildings on the subject property provided. And then basically, we have two subsections here. The first one is just basically the same language that's carried over from the current language within the code. Basically, it just says you can take the average of the two adjacent properties, and that becomes basically your front yard setback. But we also included a provision in here that lets you take sixty percent or more of the principal buildings within a numbered block on the same side of the street as the subject property, as long as those are setback less than the required zone front yard setback. The average setback of the existing nonconforming structures may be used to establish the minimum front yard of all the properties fronting on that side of the street. And just to explain what that means, so let's take, for instance, our subject area, which is the north Main Street corridor here, currently motor business. Well, right now, you have a front yard setback of ten feet. So if we look at the property that's outlined in red, even if we applied the, so say you wanted to do an addition off this property, well, let's say it's just vacant, or it burns down, and the property owner wants to rebuild. Well, right away, you have to have a ten-foot front yard setback, so it's not going to resemble the other structures that are built within this area. As you can tell, they're built right up to the front property lines. So if you apply the alternate front yard setback, basically gets you really not anywhere, just because you have this property that's setback maybe twenty, thirty feet. So if you were to take the average of this setback, along with this setback, which is zero, basically, you're in that ten, fifteen-foot setback requirement. And so applying the sixty percent rule under that proposed amendment, you take the average setback of sixty percent or more of the structures on that same side of the block, same street. And basically, it would let you, you know, looking at these, basically have a zero front setback, as well as the water department building down here has a zero setback. And so that basically becomes your setback for the property here. And so that allows us, you know, at least within this quarter of the zone motor business, as well as other commercial residential zones, allows you to replicate kind of the existing developed form within that area. And this also applies to, you know, a common occurrence that we've seen in dealing with residential properties. So you can see the property that's outlined in red, you know, that east side of the street, all the buildings predominantly have the same setback, and that's pretty close to the back edge of the sidewalk. Well, you have a rogue property here that's built thirty feet back, doesn't really resemble any of the other structures on that same block. This building were to burn down, or let's say it's vacant right now, basically, maybe you have a fifteen, twenty-foot setback within that zone, you'd be building somewhere back here. If you were to apply the average front yard setback, basically be in the same area, fifteen to twenty feet back. And so that's what the sixty percent provision allows you to do, is to take the average setback of all those structures on that block, and that basically becomes your front yard setback. So with that, Planning and Zoning Commission did take a look at this and conduct a public hearing on December tenth, and they recommended unanimous approval to city council. And staff's recommendation before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony received, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Wayne?
Mike, how does this affect, or does it affect, a residential area that, for instance, they have those sidewalks? When it was designed, it was built, it was built without sidewalks. Normally, the setback, the right-of-way is what, ten feet?
It really just depends where area you're in. Some right-of-ways are eighty feet in older neighborhoods.
Well, the point being that the front of the houses are all consistent within the neighborhood, and the setback is twenty-five feet. Does this affect that at all, where they can add on to the house, which would actually put it closer to the street? Follow what I'm saying?
Well, it allows for more options. So if you have your neighbors that are closer to the street than you are, and you want to do an addition, but maybe, say, you're at the twenty-five-foot front yard setback mark, this allows for you to duplicate the two adjacent properties, and that becomes your front yard setback. And so basically, it allows for people to go up further into that front yard setback, just because your neighbors have already been allowed to do that at some point in time.
Other questions for Mike before I open this thing up for public hearing?
Okay, thank you, Michael.
I am gonna open this up for public hearing, as of right now, and I will entertain approval. People that are in favor of this, please stand up, state your name and address, and let us know your thoughts. Seeing nobody come forward, I will ask for general comments or opposed, opposition to this. Please step forward, state your name at the podium. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. John?
I'm the council liaison for Public Department for Planning and Zoning. And Mike has done a fine job on addressing the situation, and Planning and Zoning did a very thorough job and discussed this particular issue, as they do all issues from all sides. And what they came up with is, I think, something that can be worked with, with all of the areas of the city, and it will allow, like Mike just said, some freedom. If you have to rebuild, or you want to put an addition on, so that if you are not necessarily out of compliance, but if you're not in accordance with your neighbors, and you choose to, you can bring yourself into accordance with their front yard setbacks. And then in the commercial districts, what it's gonna do, it will allow the building or the rebuilding of any part of the commercial construction to look more like the, it'll give the same appearance as you go down the street. So actually, if you're ready for a motion, I'm ready to make one.
Before you do that, John, I'd have to entertain what I'd like to hear from Jim Boland, because he was on Planning and Zoning during this hold, and get his thoughts on this as well.
I'd have to say that John's recapping that pretty well. There was, there was a lot of discussion about it, and it was looked at a number of different times, and the options that staff has come up with to do this make it as fair as it could possibly be to add on or rebuild a property in the context that you'd like to see it done. So I think they've done a great job, and I voted to approve it at, when I was on Planning and Zoning, and certainly would now.
Okay. John?
I'm gonna inform Mike.
Then I would, I would move that we approve this under suspension, approve this ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
I'll second that.
Okay. John Weber made a motion to approve this ordinance under the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary, and it was seconded by Jim Boland. I will take the roll, starting with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, that passes through six to one, so six to zero. This is ordinance number twenty fifteen zero one. Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay. An ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title Four, Chapter Six, for amendment of alternate setback requirements for commercial zoning districts, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Okay, well, folks, we'll move on to item number six, which is our city entry beautification project final report and recommendation presented by Bill Belknap. Bill, how are you doing tonight?
I'm doing well, mayor. Good evening, mayor and council. Pleased to be here this evening to present the final report on the city inchway beautification project for your consideration. Just provide a little bit of background on the project. As you may recall, the appearances of the city entryways have been an area of concern to the community for many years, and the council established a goal in two thousand and thirteen to develop improvement plans for the beautification of public right-of-way at city entries, in city entrances by two thousand and fourteen. The project viewed the city entryways more as continuous roadway corridors leading from the rural undeveloped areas into the downtown core. But ultimately, the purpose of the project is to examine the aesthetic conditions of the study corridors and identify actions that the city can take to positively impact the community's appearance and character. As you may recall, there were, the project was approached in two phases. Phase one was to assess the corridors and to identify locations that would improve the aesthetic appearance of the community. Phased, that included an examination of the soft and hardscape condition, community identity creation, visitor wayfinding resources, opportunities for public art installations, locations for focal projects, and corridor enhancements as well. Phase two of the project was then to move forward into developing the concept designs for areas that were identified for improvements, and as well to develop cost estimates for those improvements. So that included preliminary designs and cost estimating. As a reminder, there is no funding that's been currently allocated within the city budget for the construction of the improvements. The goal was to develop a plan and assess the corridors, and so that's what we're here to share with you this evening. In the fiscal thirteen, fourteen-year budget, the council appropriated thirty-five thousand in professional services for the project to assist with landscape architecture design work to support the project. And staff developed the project scope and approach, which was reviewed and approved by the council in March of two thousand and thirteen. At that point in time, the council authorized ten thousand, up to ten thousand dollars for phase one, and up to twenty-five thousand dollars for phase four, phase two, with each phase being authorized for approval separately by the council. Staff completed an RFQ process, a request for qualifications for design professionals to assist with the project, selected a provider with a contract that was approved by the council in August fifth of two thousand and thirteen. Shortly after that, we formed a steering committee to help guide and direct the project, when that steering committee held eight meetings over the course of the project, which has now lasted almost a year and a half or so. We also conducted two public open house meetings and sessions over the course of the project, one which was held on September eighteenth, and one that was held on May twenty-ninth. I just would like to recognize the members of the steering committee that dedicated their time and effort towards the project. It included councillor Steed as chair of the steering committee, Melanie Zimmer from the University Inn as vice chair, Michelle Fuson from Lake Park County, Ken Helm from the Idaho Transportation Department, Josh Larson, Angie Nitrusio from the Moscow Chamber of Commerce, Iris Mays from our arts commission, Jim Miller from Prime Land Cooperative and PAWS Veterinary Clinic, Ray Pankoff from the University of Idaho, and Nels Reese from the city's Planning and Zoning Commission. A steering committee role was to provide project guidance and oversight, and ultimately represent the community and project stakeholders, and to provide recommendations to the city council. There were a number of tasks that we asked the steering committee to conduct during the course of the project, the first of which was to go out and to try to view the community with new eyes. We all become accustomed to things that we see every day, and it was important for us to have the steering committee see the community as an outside visitor would see the community. We asked the steering committee members to drive the study corridors, to record their impressions. We wanted them to be aware of transitions from rural to suburban to urban areas, to identify what they liked, and what they'd like to see more of that we termed as assets, to identify areas that could be improved, that we identified as opportunities, to really pay special attention to identify areas where there was a prominent visual location that could be a community focal point for improvement, which we identified as focal projects, and where there are locations where general improvements, condition of the roadways, condition of the sidewalks should be considered as corridor improvement locations, and any other items that they noted. They were given maps and photos, aerial photos of the corridor study areas. This is just one example of the south corridor. So south is here on the left-hand side of the screen, beginning at Prime Land Cooperative, and then here at the south cuplet on the right-hand side. And this is just one example of the notes and areas that were noted and identified by a steering committee member. So we collected this from all the steering committee members that viewed the corridors, and then we kind of entered those into a Google map to really begin to organize the input that we received, and allowed the steering committee to kind of work through and organize the individual thoughts of all the eight members. We then moved forward into our first open house meeting, where we developed a series of stations and posters that described the project, that identified what the goals and objectives of the projects were, and to ask the community to assist us in identifying areas where they'd like to see improvements. And we had them do a very similar study with different colored dots to place on maps of each of the corridors, to identify areas they liked, to identify areas they think that could be good improvement areas. And it's really difficult to see at this scale, but you have copies of those maps in your packet. But there are a number of dots that participants placed on the maps to identify where they felt improvements should occur. We developed an initial list of potential project sites with a general description and a relative magnitude of cost comparison. It was a fairly long list that the steering committee worked through to identify where they felt the effort should be placed. And ultimately, there were eight sites that were identified, two on each corridor, that came forward in their phase one report recommendations as a key focal site improvement areas. So on October twenty-first of two thousand and thirteen, steering committee presented that phase one report with their recommendations. At that point in time, the council accepted the report and authorized the project to proceed to phase two for the concept designs. There were some concerns that were raised through the course of the project as we got into the concept design stage with Idaho Transportation Department, and concerns about safety in clear zones. And that did delay the project for a number of months, probably about six to seven months in that process to work through those concerns. And we're now completing, have completed phase two with this report to you this evening. So as I mentioned, there were eight project sites. There were actually a number of other recommendations we'll get into, but there were eight project sites that were identified for the concept improvement design, so I'll kind of run through those fairly quickly.
Hang on a second, Bill.
Yes, sir.
How well attended was your, were your open house?
The first open house meeting, we had about forty to forty-five in attendance, so I think we had a really pretty good turnout at the first open house meeting. At the second open house meeting, where we're sharing the concept designs, we had probably fifteen people. So we had, we had, it was in May, and so it was a little bit more lightly attended than the first one. But the first one, we were really soliciting the input on where the, where the improvements needed to occur.
That was in the fall of two thousand and thirteen.
Was in the fall, and that one actually was, was very well attended.
That's kind of where you wanted the most people in.
That was probably the most important stage of the project. So we'll kind of walk through these. You have, each of these are included in the final report, but this is the west entry location near the intersection of Warbonnet and Pullman Road. So again, looking at that lower hill area behind the existing Walmart store, it's a fairly bare grass slope, and on the south side of the roadway with some landscape enhancements, tree installations, and it is, it is kind of where the mall landscape buffer ends there at U-Haul, then it becomes fairly bare from there out to the city limit boundary. So this is, this was one of the, the west entry location concept design. Moving inward on the western corridor, then the next focal area on the west corridor was that Pullman and Llewellyn intersection. It's an area where Llewellyn is of limited improvement. There is a fair amount of guerrilla parking that does occur on the western side of that right-of-way at a variety of times. And so there was a desire to try to clean up that corner by establishing the screening and landscaping installation. There was a suggestion for a landscape median to begin to slow traffic as you're entering the downtown core. And this really is that transition point in the west corridor, where you're going from the, the four-lane or five-lane section, higher speed limit, and transitioning into the twenty-five mile, a mile an hour more urbanized zone in the downtown core. And so this was viewed as kind of that terminal point of the western corridor, where you Warbonnet's where you enter, and this is kind of where you're now starting to get into downtown and identified as improvement. So a number of landscape enhancements on the roadway edge, potential public art installation on that triangle point, as well as that landscape median. Moving to the north, the primary focus was landscape installations along the west side of the northern, of the Intraway and Ninety-Five. This is the rodeo, rodeo intersection, so beginning to establish street trees down the rodeo corridor, really have very limited tree installation up in the north end of town, and providing additional landscape buffer and screening on the west side of the highway. Coming south on the north corridor, then, that corridor terminated at the north cuplet. So this is at the C Street intersection with Main, where Jackson begins to swing off and continue on to the south. We have an existing slightly landscape island located at that cuplet, and this would tie into the city council's goal to expand the perceived downtown area by establishing street trees up from A Street up to the C Street corridor, additional street tree installations on the west side of Main sweeping into Jackson, and additional landscape treatments in that center landscape island, or to the two landscape islands that exist there. Moving out to the east corridor, the steering committee felt that Mountain View and Highway Eight was really kind of that gateway, first entry point into town on the east corridor. And so a number of street tree installations and landscape enhancements suggested, proposed in that location. And then as we continue to the west, moving in, then the next location that was identified was at the Steiner and White intersection, where there's an opportunities for landscape along the path, as well as improvements to the existing Jersey barricade, as well as the retaining wall located on the north side of the highway in that location. As we move to the south, the steering committee felt that the Plu서ver Drive really picking up from the South Fork Bridge. up from the South Fork Bridge crossing into Pluse River Drive, which is the first civilized intersection that you reach when you enter the community from the south. Again, focusing significantly on establishing street trees up that corridor, looking at opportunities for decorative metalwork, handrails on the bridge guardrails, and again, street tree installations along the intersection of Pluse River Drive and US ninety-five South Main. And then the last site was the south couplet, that again anchoring kind of the end of the southern corridor, and is an area where there is existing public art and landscaping on the north point of the intersection between Washington and Jackson there, but fairly limited landscaping anywhere else on the perimeter of that intersection. And again, that is the first very significant and major intersection in both anchors the Highway Eight corridor as well as ninety-five as it reaches into the downtown area. So that does include a number of elements of landscaping improvements, of visual gateway features along the old ninety-five bridge showing that view heading into the downtown core and street tree installations. So there, as I mentioned, there were a number of recommendations that the steering committee provided to the council, the first of which was really trying to provide a, developing a program to encourage both the city itself, as well as private business owners to, and property owners to really beautify Moscow, and to look at increased street tree landscaping, property maintenance, as well as targeted city efforts at weed control and removal, which was a significant comment that was received by the steering committee throughout the course of the project, was just looking at the level of weeds in the right of way and edge of the roadway, as well as on private property. But really, it was a focus of trying to create a program, trying to create some synergy among the city, as well as private property owners, to put a focus on the appearances of the community. The second was to review landscaping and sign clutter near the city welcome signs at the west, north, and east entrances. Some of the landscaping is fairly small scale and a pocket around the individual signs. And there were some sign clutter that was especially noted near the west entry sign because that is the state line, so you end up having a lot of regulatory signage as you enter the state of Idaho that's in close proximity and somewhat competes for the Welcome to Moscow sign that marks the entry to the city way. Objective three was to design and construct targeted landscape improvements in key visual areas in each corridor, and those are the ones we just walked through. There were two that were identified in each of the corridors recommended for landscape improvement projects, and so those are the sites we just reviewed. And objective four was to evaluate public art installation opportunities within the project corridors to add interest and character. I think we had about four different sites that were identified in each of the concept designs that could be good accommodate public art installations that were identified throughout the study. Objective five was to support the university's efforts to improve their gateway entrances in the historical rail corridors on the south side of the Pullman Road between perimeter and Line Street. A number of those, three of those entryway gateways were actually constructed this summer, so that was certainly a very positive impact on the corridor, but there still are some other locations that the university hopes to improve to improve the overall appearances on Pullman Road. And objective six was to partner with Idaho Transportation Department to pursue the potential inclusion of landscaping, public art, city welcome sign locations, and other amenities within the Thorn Creek project, once that project is identified for construction. The steering committee did walk through the eight individual sites for prioritization.
If I may, do you have a copy of what's in our packet?
I do.
I just noticed something, a typo. You just went through the implementation plan and the objectives. Page thirty-three of the copy in our packet does not have objective three in it.
Oh, it was, those were actually described within each of the, so the objective three were the concept designs.
Yeah, this is in the list of, on page thirty-three.
No, there's just not an objective three.
It's one, two, four, five, and six.
Correct.
And three got dropped somehow, so.
Yeah, it ended up in section four of the document, and we can certainly add that in. We picked up with the concept designs, and then these were the remaining. So if you read the introduction, it discusses under five point one, it describes section three of this document lists six objectives.
Right.
Eight conceptual sites that make up phase two of this project described in number four of this document fulfill objective three. That's why it is not in that list. We can certainly add that back in, but it was, those were just discussed in the preceding five or six pages to that page, so those were the remaining items.
So if someone else doesn't think they're missing something, you might want to either put it in or put objective three discussed previously.
Sure.
Whatever.
Sure, we can do that. Okay, so as I mentioned, the steering committee, as well as identifying the eight individual sites, did focus on prioritizing those sites or their recommended prioritization to the city council. The first priority that was identified was the north entryway enhancement. That was number one. The second was the north couplet enhancement because it also helped and reinforced the council's goal to expand the perceived downtown area. The third priority was the south entryway, so the South Fork Bridge to the Pluse River Drive intersection. Fourth was the south couplet. Fifth was the Hatley Way and Warbonnet intersection. Sixth was Mountain View and Troy Road. Seven was Steiner and White Avenue, and then the Llewellyn and Third Street intersection actually was identified as eighth, and is recommended in the plan for potential delay until the future of that intersection is identified. There is some concept for the reconfiguration of Third and Llewellyn to improve site distance and safety and operations of that intersection. If that's the case, then we should probably postpone that discussion for improvements until such time as that's been resolved and identified. Again, I think predominantly north and south were the areas that were felt that could have the greatest improvement. West and east were probably the two best current condition, and that really is reflected in the prioritization that the steering committee is recommending. So the steering committee certainly recognizes that these improvements are identified and planned, as you look at the cost estimates are not inexpensive, and so they probably exceed any realistic funding opportunity in the short term outside of some grant programs that we certainly will continue to explore. One of the recommendations of the steering committee was to look at a self-performance model where the city would hire two full-time seasonal individuals that would work essentially approximately six months a year and would do tree and landscape installation in order to get some of the enhancements. A significant focus of the improvements are really street tree installations in a large number of locations. So there was an outline of a program, including labor and materials, of what something like that could look like. It was anticipated that the actual installations could probably be accomplished over a three-year time period. So you can see that there are labor and material expenses that are carried through year three that run roughly sixty thousand dollars a year for that program. And then in year four and five, it shifts down into kind of a maintenance mode where you would just be predominantly the labor for the ongoing landscape maintenance, vegetation and weed management control, and then some materials for, you know, plant mortality and change out in trees that die that you need to replace over time.
Bill.
John, you want to?
Just a question.
Okay.
You've got year four and five where you have reduced the materials significantly, but the annual labor is going to remain the same. In fact, it went up. Would that be from year five through fifteen, twenty?
It was anticipated that that would be an ongoing activity, and it's after the installations of, you know, the corridors, there may be other areas, let's say potentially in the downtown area, where that labor could also be placed into a higher level of maintenance, street cleaning, other activities. So it was anticipated that that additional labor expense would likely be an ongoing expense depending upon the maintenance needs that we saw. To be conservative, I was suggesting that those individuals would be responsible for long-term maintenance. It probably is likely that after the installations are done, they could do that, as well as maybe other additional activities with beautification and additional maintenance activities.
Bill, this though, do you add more to your presentation you want to talk about?
Just a little bit, but I'm happy to answer your question. The steering committee also in its recommendations did identify and wish to prioritize the north entryway project and to complete that project as a design build bid and build project, not necessarily through the self-performance model. So we would develop a actual design that could be placed out to bid for construction and to help accelerate the installation in that location because they felt that was a high need, and then we can move into the self-performance model on the remaining locations. So just a recap of the expenses in the project so far. I have had some questions about that. As I mentioned before, the council authorized the thirty-five thousand on the project, ten thousand in phase one, and up to twenty-five thousand in phase two. Our actual expenses on the project were fourteen thousand, just under fourteen thousand two hundred dollars. We expended just over two thousand dollars for phase one and approximately twelve thousand dollars for phase two. So that's how we ended up on the project based on the council's authorization. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Bill, this was on April of two thousand and twelve, this became a Moscow City Council identified goal. We're almost three years into this thing. It looks like a well-written report for the project. And one of the things, and you hit it once, and I'm going to hit it again because I highlighted, and it's one of the things, and the comment that the committee made, it is understood that those who have lived in the community for a long period of time become accustomed to the community and often do not notice that which is more apparent to someone who has never been to Moscow, and I think that's very, very true. I think it's awful easy when we have our own backyard and we get a few extra weeds once in a while, it's easy just to mow them over, continue on or whatever, or you have a fence that needs painted or whatever. So I think that's a valid, very valid point that's easy for us to have happen to us. I'm going to go to Wink, because he had a question on one of the couplets somewhere.
Go back to your drawing, please, Bill, to the north entrance. Notice that we have recommendations all along the west side of Main down to Rodeo Drive, but then south of Rodeo Drive in this area and further south, there's no recommendations. Why was that?
There are recommendations for continued street tree installations, working with private property owners all the way down through and in front of Rosars, and actually all the way down to the north couplet project, but it wasn't an identified individual focus project. Okay?
One of the things, Bill, as I was going through the total of these eight projects, and of course you guys had six different phases that you looked at, or five different phases earlier, running roughly fifty to sixty thousand bucks per phase for planting trees or vegetation or whatever. And I looked at all the other combined totals in here, which comes about one point eight million bucks, which may or may not be accurate, maybe have a contingency of fifteen to twenty percent higher than that, so I mean, it's a, so you're really looking at two million dollars. Could you go back to that suggested amount that you had for labor and items towards the end of your presentation? Wherever those were.
Almost there.
Yeah, those right there. Year one, year two, year three, year four, and year five. Now, my question for you is this, is what projects in year one, year two, year three, year four, and year five? I think that's a question I'd like to elaborate on.
So it was anticipated that each of the project sites could be completed within a three-year time period. So all eight sites could be improved. Now, it's only going to, it's not going to be the full improvement, so you look at the decorative steel work on the handrails.
You're talking about vegetation and?
You're talking about landscape material placement and street tree installations.
Okay.
But some of the more, there are some more expensive items that include the public art, the decorative handrails, the metalwork. That is not contemplated in the self-performance model. In that instance, we're anticipating that those would have to be possibly art, public art grants or other funding sources that we might be able to secure for those, but this was just primarily, and with the primary focus being weed and vegetation control, street tree installations, and some landscape enhancements, those were things we felt that we could self-perform those tasks with this proposal.
And getting those things started now.
However, if the, this is just a suggestion for the council's consideration.
If the council gives the direction, of course, I understand that.
Correct.
Well, I want to go to Walter. He was the chair of the steering committee.
I was just going to try to clarify your question, Mr. Mayor, and or elicit Bill's explanation to answer that. What, I believe what you're looking at is the landscape architect's cost estimate for the project that was developed, and as you said, I believe it approaches two million dollars. I think, Bill, the mayor's question might have been, how'd you get from two million dollars down to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the three years installation? If you could elaborate on that.
It's just magic.
Well, I think actually Bill did a pretty good job of that because we talked about all the art and all the artistic thing.
It's not just that, though.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Things in addition to that.
Well, there certainly are some things that would, so there are a couple of elements. One is, we would not be paying a landscape architect to develop, you know, biddable construction documents. These would be based upon the concept designs and somewhat designed in the field. All the landscape materials would be purchased directly by bulk and would be installed with their own labor, so, you know, between those two items, there are some significant savings. There are some of the hardscape improvements that are not included in the budget that may have to be partnered up with the sidewalk program or may look at other opportunities to assist in some of those installations. And then the public art, the decorative steel, some of the more extensive improvement elements are not included, not contemplated. This would get us starting at a higher level of maintenance of the roadway corridors with some street tree installations, some landscape bed installation, and it's a smaller scale, but it was anticipated at the one point eight million, that was not realistic that we would be able to fund that. So the next question is, what could we realistically do? What kind of program could we put together where we could actually get some improvements happening and begin to also partner with the private business community to help improve their frontages, like we had done, for example, on the Highway Eight, the Troy Road project in front of Napa Auto Parts in Petzpeople, too, that we worked on that landscape bed installation and street trees installation, and then they took over the maintenance of that. So we're really looking at what can we do to make a difference here.
Walter?
Mr. Mayor and council, we believe as the committee and with staff, that if we walked in here with a two million dollar program, we would get a, wow, great work, took you a little long to get it done, and thank you very much. And we wouldn't see anything get started or accomplished. The idea that Bill has presented is Bill's idea, and that's not to give him blame if it goes wrong, it's to give him credit when it goes right. He said, there's got to be a way to do this that's realistically expensive. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not jump change, it's real money. It's got to come from somewhere, and the challenge is going to be to staff to figure out how to, and the mayor, of how to work it into a proposed budget. But it is a start, and it's a way to improve the appearance perception of Moscow. Mr. Mayor, I would state that Moscow has a perception problem. We are perceived, in the Boise area, in my opinion, as not being business friendly. We are perceived as not being Boise State University. We're just the land-grant university.
Well, we're still not Boise State University.
We are perceived as the tragedy that occurred, as you mentioned earlier, ten days ago. This is an appearance problem that we're talking about tonight, and I think what's being proposed here is a way to start on that. When the university finds a way to attract potential students from South Idaho, southeast Idaho, Montana, Wyoming, and the parents finally say, okay, get a map, let's figure out where Moscow is, and we'll take you up there this Vandal Friday, or whatever it happens to be, the committee felt very strongly that what those parents see as they first drive into town, and what the students see, is important and will help the university in their efforts to increase their enrollment. And as we've realized and come to realize, the university is the economic engine of Moscow. When the university enrollment drops, real estate drops, downtown businesses that are on the edge have trouble hanging on. We need that enrollment to keep Moscow vibrant, and the committee and staff believe that this proposed project, in the fashion that Bill has laid out, is a way to start getting a handle on that.
Mr. Mayor, I think that Bill come up with a reachable target here, and I don't think, though, that we need to just shelve the rest of the plan. You know, there's great opportunity there, and with the plan, I think that that gives us the opportunities to go for, you know, whatever block grants or whatever might come available. You know, we had our recent census stuff that come through that may have changed the way we may receive some grants. I don't know if it applies to this necessarily, but that may free up money in other places as well. I would make a motion that we task the staff and the mayor to. This five-year plan, so that we've, and you know, I agree with, yeah, go ahead and flash that up there.
I just wanted to get the whole recommendation up there. I was only showing part of the slides.
Right. But yeah, and I do think that the north entry project is the priority, along with the south, because, you know, like Walter says, where a lot of these parents coming from, they're, we'll face it, they're coming from Boise, you know, who do we hate? They probably hate them, too, so they're gonna bring them up here. So, anyway, that rambling motion, I guess. So I would restate it here. I'd make a motion that we task the staff and the mayor to include these recommendations into the '16 budget, and we'll see what happens during the workshop.
I'd second that, but follow up with more comments if I might.
Okay, go ahead.
Clearly, it's gonna take some budgetary work, and when we start a budget here in the next few months, it finally gets approved in August, September time, and time to start October 1st. But I'd like to also explore the possibility of recouping that $20,800 or something and start in on this year with what we can do with that much money.
Absolutely.
In terms of meeting Objective One and Objective Two, the starting in on weed control, especially up on the north main, and also reducing the sign clutter. I was noticing, as I rolled in from the north the other day, that our very own Tree City USA sign, as you roll in, is smack in front of the Welcome to Moscow sign. You have a hard time seeing Welcome to Moscow because of our tree sign. You know, some rearrangement of signs, and even the service club signs, especially out on the west entrance, could be accomplished. And I think getting a start with some kind of identified money that we might have on hand now, before we get well into growing season and have to chase after the weeds but get in front of the little buggers, Parks and Rec, Dwight, would also be a good idea. And so in addition to studying this for inclusion in the budget, I'd also like to see something worked in, possibly through recouping, that Gary will object to, but see what we could do with the leftover money from the study.
You want to comment on that, Gary?
I'm certainly not objecting to it. That money, of course, would have to be appropriated, we have to open the budget. However, last year, we hired the weed control done. That was done within existing resources that we have in the budget.
I'm sorry, Gary, did what?
It was, the funds that we used to take care of the weeds last year was done within the existing maintenance budget. So we'll likely be able to do that again this year, Art. The funds that, in those sort of line items, they just don't roll over, they're placed in, if there is fund balance, is placed in capital projects. The line item that funded the study, that Bill, the architect, the city entranceway study, was funded at $35,000, of which, as Bill indicated, about $14,000 was expended. $7,500 of that was approved by the council to be utilized for participation in the legacy crossing market analysis study. So there's about $13,000 that was transferred into capital projects. I guess what I would recommend, that if the direction from the council, and it doesn't even need to be part of the motion, if the council wants to direct staff to come up with a plan for weed control and direct us to bring something to council, we can certainly do that, and if we need additional funding, we can bring that back to council. Additionally, the sign clutter is something that we can assess through the Public Works Department and might be able to be handled, at least begin to be handled. I can't see that costing a lot of money at this point. Have them, obviously the task force, the group, looked at it, and in their opinion, their sign clutter that can be mitigated. Let's turn that over to Public Works, have them assess it and see what can be done. When we first put the entry signs up years and years ago, there were service sign all the way up and down north and south Maine. It took us years, but we finally put those all on one big omnibus sign, which isn't as attractive as some would like, but it's certainly more attractive than having 12 service club signs like a Barbasol, Burma Shave signs. So, yeah, Barbasol, Burma Shave, whatever, anyway. And that was one of the reasons that those came up as well. So there are some ways to do this. But again, I'm not sure that, that having the extra funds or re-appropriating them at this point makes sense until we determine what the cost would be for that.
John, either.
We're talking at this point of a five-year project, $57,000 down to $29,000 per year. So if we start this, we pretty much have to continue with it, and we cannot, as far as I know, we cannot appropriate money for year five until we get to year five.
Well, there's a couple, if I may, a couple of ways you can approach that. If the council wants to set that much money aside in capital projects and allocate it out year to year, you're certainly free to do that in the annual budget. I think what John's referring to is we aren't allowed to, you're not allowed to bind future councils by incurring debt outside of a single budget year. In this case, the council certainly can adopt this as the plan, and it will come forward to you in the budget every year as you weigh your priorities. Just as the sidewalk program, council came up with the sidewalk program that they approved, we bring that to you every year, and it's funded. Council reviews it, determines if that's what they want to do. The street maintenance program, we've gone from an overlay program to an omnibus street maintenance program. Council approved that, that's what comes in every year. So in that aspect, certainly, if the council wants to pursue this proposal, we can certainly put pen to paper, bring that in the budget process, and say this is step one of a five-phased approach.
Mr. Mayor?
Walter?
Gary, I think I heard you just say that the city, I'm not sure you said the council, because I don't remember doing it, appropriated the money for the legacy crossing marketing study out of the already identified funds for this project. Did the council specifically do that, or did the staff use those funds? I know we authorized the marketing study, I get that.
Yeah.
I don't remember that we did it as reach over into the entryway beautification project funds and take those funds to do the URA marketing study.
If I may?
Go ahead.
At the time we brought the marketing study forward, we had a three-phased approach to it. The university, the city, university, I think, was 12.5, city was 7,500, and the balance was paid by the Urban Renewal Agency. We brought that to council. Bill had indicated at that time that he wasn't going to utilize the full funding.
I remember approving that, I agree. I just didn't remember the part where he said the money we're gonna use are these other previously identified funds.
We identified the funding source as being the bill's planning or professional services line item.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Um, Walter?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm not sure whether we've got a clean motion on the floor or a clean second. There's been more discussion and expansion of Dan's original motion.
Here's what the motion said, and Stephanie, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The motion that Dan made was to approve this five-year plan into the budget with the staff and the mayor working for this, towards this for the next budget year coming up this summer. Is that correct?
Right.
And it was seconded by Art.
Right.
Is that pretty much what we got over there?
Well, I didn't, Art said he would second it, but he was interested in doing this other stuff, so I wasn't...
Well, yeah, but all the other stuff that Art brought up...
That falls under discussion, because if I didn't say it then, I was likely gonna be shut out.
And that was a discussion part, that wasn't part of the motion, no. That was...
That would have had to been an amendment, and it wasn't.
No.
It was not an amendment.
He did second it.
You intended to second...
I seconded without amendment, but with further discussion.
No amendment to the motion.
As a part of further discussion, I'd like to ask Bill a question about this. Okay, we've got the five-year plan there, and then we've got the other steering committee recommendation about making a design bid-build project out of the north end. So is that, would that be a separate thing, or is some of that included in the five-year plan, in the planting of trees and whatnot that would go on where it's not specific? Would some of that be on the north end, or would the, I don't see how that ties in?
Correct. So if you were to do the north entry as a separate project, you possibly could, so it's not incorporated in here. The cost estimate for the north enhancement was just over $80,000 in total cost. The steering committee suggested tapering it down to something closer to a $50,000 project, so scaling it down slightly, but still moving forward under the design bid-build model. This cost proposal really anticipated doing all of the sites, so the quantity of plant materials and trees and so forth that were anticipated in the material list was equal to the number of plantings in all of the eight project sites. So you could reduce this slightly, or you would complete at year 2.5 rather than all the way through the third year. So there could be some savings in this program if the council chose to go ahead and move forward the north entry in a different performance model. So there could be some savings in this, but it would be an additional cost that's not shown here. So if you had $50,000, so year one, if you wanted to budget for that north entry, as well as beginning this project, might be the $108,000 would be the first-year cost. And then year two, maybe the same, and year three, you may see a reduction in materials by $15,000 or $18,000 because you've already installed those in year one underneath that different model.
Gary liked it.
So if you...
Jim, continue. I'll let Jim continue, then I'll come to you there.
If you did the first three years, and we decided to do the north thing as a separate design bid-build project, then we probably would not put any resources into the north out of those first three years if we've decided we're gonna do that as a separate project, right? So the numbers that are there would be allocated to the rest of the sites, and the north would be on its own.
Correct.
Gary, did you?
Okay, I guess I'm still confused. So I thought what I heard you say is the north project is included in these numbers unless it is split out. If it's split out, those numbers will be reduced by that amount.
They'd be reduced by some amount, but the relative amount...
A thousand bucks or something like that.
No, because, well, that's the actual cost if we were to do a full design, you know, how our landscape, our new design, bid it, and hire a contractor for installation, estimated cost is $50,000. If we were to do the self-performance of that project, it may be closer to $18,000 to $20,000. And so you'd have that reduction of cost from the self-performance total if you were to take that project and advance it and bid it separately.
So, just to clarify, so if the decision of the council is to move ahead with a design bid-build on the north end, you'll see some commensurate reduction for materials and some labor, but you'll have an expanded cost of $50,000 to $80,000 for the north project?
Correct, and it just depends on where you want to see that reduction of cost, whether you want to see it in year one or year three, depending upon where you wanted to distribute that.
Okay, if I may follow up.
Okay, go ahead.
So as far as, and maybe this is for Walter as well as Bill, but as far as the decision or the recommendation for a design bid-build, what resources were looked at in making that recommendation? What considerations were made to turn that over rather than do that with our own resources?
I think the recommendation was to accelerate the installation.
Okay.
Was to get the north entrance done.
Okay.
The concept was that, I mean, this was a possible self-performance model, but we weren't sure whether the council was gonna be interested in pursuing it. If nothing else, the north entry was something that the committee wanted to be prioritized. And so that was really the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Walter?
Probably a question for the city attorney. Gary used the word omnibus while ago, speaking to the service groups sign thing. And I would like to think that I've got an omnibus motion here that might pick up a lot of this and give the council a chance to say, yes, but we don't like, you know, number three. You've got a motion to second on the floor. How can I proceed to get mine before the council?
You'd offer an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
But the motion's gotta be voted on first, right?
No, not if you...
No, it's already been seconded. You have a motion, the body has a motion, now you're doing the discussion. If he wants to add an amendment, he can offer that through the moving, who moved it.
And that is voted on separate.
Yes, to see if they wanted to amend the motion.
Okay, Walter, what's your amendment?
My amendment to the motion, Mr. Mayor, would be to accept, and some of this will incorporate earlier verbiage, to accept the entryway beautification project report and to direct staff to not only follow the report's Phase Three implementation plan and prioritization, but to more specifically and immediately, one, reappropriate for such implementation the remainder of this project's design funds that were not utilized in FY 2014. Again, this spring, to bring in the red shirts, quote-unquote, to knock down weeds at all four major highway entrances to the city. Third, to prioritize the north entry enhancement, Objective 3.2, .3, .5, and pursue this improvement immediately through a design bid-build model. And fourth, utilize the self-performance landscape installation vegetation management program five-year plan on page 35 of the report, including annually budgeting for the estimated cost of such program.
Well, I'll second it, but I have a question.
Okay.
And it's probably for the attorney again. That is an overincompassing amendment that would actually eliminate the original motion, would it not?
It seemed like it was replacing...
Well, it says the same thing, you know, and with that, you know, I...
Withdraw your motion.
I will withdraw mine and let Walter stand as the motion if the seconder is okay with that.
But it's no longer yours.
He's saying what we wanted to say, he did.
You may do it. If you get the consensus of the council, the motion can be withdrawn.
Okay.
Because the entire council says that they want to have it withdrawn. If that's what you wish to do, you can put that before the council.
Or you could re-vote on the motion, kill the motion, and just have Walter make another motion.
Well, you, right now, it's been seconded, so you have a motion to amend, unless the council can, you guys could just say that you want to get rid of the first one, vote on that, and then accept Walter's motion.
Are you guys okay with withdrawing the first motion?
I am. I'm fine with that.
How about you, Art, you're the secondor. Okay, consider that motion scrubbed now. So the motion changes.
Go ahead.
Walter, go ahead and do it.
Say that whole thing again.
You're gonna let me do it?
I'm gonna let the mayor read it, since he has written it all down, word for word.
Would you be inclined to read this motion, Walter, and was seconded by Wayne?
Stephanie, there's one change in what you have, if I may, Mr. Mayor, and that is to change number one to read remainder of the project's design funds, because Gary pointed out $21,000 is not still available.
Motion to accept the entryway beautification project report and to direct staff to not only follow the report's Phase Three implementation plan and prioritization, but to more specifically and immediately reappropriate for such implementation the remainder of the project's design funds that were not utilized in fiscal year 2014. Again, this spring, bring in red shirts to knock down weeds at all four major highway entrances to the city. Number three, prioritize the north entry enhancement, Objective 3.2, .3, .5, and pursue this improvement immediately through a design bid-build model. And four, utilize the self-performance landscape installation vegetation management program plan on page 35 of the report, including annual budgeting for the estimated cost of the program.
And it was seconded by Wayne.
Yep.
John, you have a question on it?
Just a comment.
Okay.
If we're, I can't support that. And the reason I can't support it is we went from $57,670 to probably $110,000, $120,000 for this budget year that we're going to be dealing with shortly. And what that does, in my opinion, it takes another amount, another $60,000 that we may or may not need somewhere else in the budget, and we have appropriated it without seeing anything else. And unless I see more than I've seen, I have nothing against beautifying the city, I have nothing against starting on the northern end. But if we're going to commit the city's budget to $120,000 or better, just to... better, just to beautify the north end of Moscow without knowing what other budget requirements the city is going to have, I think we're making a mistake. And that would be the reason that I can't support this motion.
Jim? I'd like to ask Bill if maybe in the, as this was put together, if there wasn't a funding source identified, maybe that we're not, we're not aware of yet, to do the, the design bid build project. Was there something in, in the steering committee that went on there where some funding source was identified that we don't know about?
No, the intent was to, the goal was to develop improvement plans and develop those cost estimates, and then the council could consider those through the budget process. So there's no funding source that the steering committee was aware, that the, that the council's not aware of. This was just a suggestion of how improvements could be made.
Walter, you have another comment?
Mr. Mayor, to answer John's comments, John, it was never my intent, and I don't believe the motion intends, to add fifty thousand on top of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. There's nothing that says that year one couldn't be the twenty seventeen budget, and year two, twenty eighteen, with the north entry, the fifty thousand for that being the twenty sixteen budget cycle. The motion instructs staff to follow the report's implementation plan and prioritization, and to prioritize the north entry under the design bid build model. It does not tell staff how to create the budget to bring forward to us, and it does not, in my opinion, specifically state that we're going to be looking for a hundred and seven thousand dollars in the FY sixteen budget. It's a, it is, I will accept it as a challenge to staff to figure out how to get this done with all, you know, due speed, if you would.
Yeah. And I understand, Walter, it could be interpreted that way. I read it the same way John does, and that is that you, in this motion, directing staff to bring forward the, the prioritization of the north entry, which by Bill's estimates between fifty and eighty thousand, and to begin the five-year plan, which is fifty-seven thousand. It doesn't say it can be delayed. And I guess I'm looking for what amount of flexibility is there here? It's extraordinary for the council to instruct staff, as a policymaking body, to employ a certain entity to conduct weed control. Typically, the council would say, take care of the weeds at the entryway, not, not instruct staff or administration that you are to hire this certain person to do that. So it's, it's a very inclusive motion, and we can do it. I guess what I'm looking for is, how can we, what amount of flexibility do you want in it? If we're to develop this in the budget coming forward, we can certainly do that. That's not a problem at all. If you want to take some funds and pursue some things this year that we can't absorb in our maintenance budget, we can certainly do that as well. And I'm just looking for some guidance on how to do that, or what you want to do that.
Walter, when I seconded your motion, I really didn't understand it to be something that had to be completed this year, that it would be financed and built in one year. I thought-
I don't, I don't see-
As Gary was saying, that it would be-
I don't see that, I don't see that in here.
But it would be through the design bid build process that we would get started on it right away, and it would definitely prioritize it so that we could move forward and expedite it as we can, in whatever best financial method we can.
I, I don't, I don't see in it what y'all are reading in it. I would accept a proposal to provide staff relief from the ability of doing what they feel like they're being asked to do. I liked the red shirts last year. The red shirts did a fantastic job of getting it knocked down in two days and taken care of. I have heard pushback from staff at wanting to hire people on a seasonal basis to do that, not use the red shirts. We spent eighteen hundred dollars?
Sixteen.
Sixteen hundred dollars to knock it down with red shirts in two days. If it takes a council motion and vote to say, do it again, I'm prepared to make that motion. Council may not support it, but we can fiddle around working on hiring seasonal staff to put people out there to work for two solid months, a couple of guys, to try to achieve the same things we did for sixteen hundred dollars in two days. It just struck me as a wonderful, easy thing that we did, and I just wanted to make sure we did it again. I'm sorry.
Gary, you have his hand up, Mayor.
Yeah, certainly, and I have no, no problem at all. And if you've heard feedback, negative feedback, I have not heard that same negative feedback. So if you're in possession of information that I don't have, I'd certainly like to hear it. We'll do it in the most expeditious way possible, if this is available. I've had conversations with Dwight. If this is the best way to do it, and it's the most cost-effective, certainly that's what we'll do. But again, what I'm looking for is, is some guidance, and to know what kind of flexibility you want from us. In this motion, you say about pursuing the north entry enhancement project immediately through a design bid build model. Immediately to mean means now, before the end of this budget year. Is that correct or not?
We never do anything that fast, Gary. Immediately start on it, in my opinion.
That's the way I understand it. Immediately means, immediately start on it. That doesn't mean it's going to get completed this year.
It doesn't have a conclusion date on it, Gary. I mean, if, if you need, if you need lighter wording in it, I'd be happy to entertain that. I asked staff, after the Public Works Finance Committee meeting last Monday, to create a more specific action proposal in tonight's packet. I couldn't get it. I had to write my own, and I did.
Well, I guess we'll see if it passes. Everybody done talking? There's more conversation we want to have before I start asking for a roll. Art?
I still don't think we've given enough direction, as requested by staff, on how we'd like to proceed relatively specifically, and perhaps loosen up the language to indicate not necessarily red shirts, but the most efficient, cost-effective, and timely means of approaching the weed issue would be more appropriate, which would include part-time seasonal staff as well as red shirts, because red shirts is good, but it's more than a one-off to take care of the weeds. You'd have to visit it several times throughout a growing season.
Not if you cut them at the end of the rainy season. You knock them down, they stay down.
Yeah. So anyway, I'd, in any case, I'd like to see that language loosened up a little bit. And also, I'd like to maybe see some language that clarifies the staff, that immediately might involve the weed whacking, maybe some sign movement immediately, but the longer bid build bidding project could occur in time for the budget cycle to work its way through, and then the years one through five could pick up subsequent to that. Start working the other entrances after we go through the north entrance, and then pick this up afterwards, because really, it's year one. When does year one start? Whenever we decide we want to. So I'd like to just see, more specifically, start in on the bid build on the north, get that worked into next year's budget, use the money that we have now to take care of the growing season, and then start year one subsequent to the north end.
Dan?
Yeah, I think Walter's motion kind of, to me, it seems to allow that flexibility.
Yeah.
You know, it's, you know, other than specifically calling out, you know, the red shirts there, that's, that's the only thing that really I see as specific. But otherwise, you know, the way we're talking about it, I think the staff can realize that he, that we're being flexible with it.
Yeah, but at the same time, requesting some specifics on how exactly to approach this in a temporal fashion. So I think to assist staff and to clarify exactly what we want this project, we sort of have to lay out a timeline that we'd like to see things done.
If, if the red shirt, the sixteen hundred dollar red shirts to cut the weeds at four entrances of Moscow is a problem, I'll take that out of the motion, if the secondor agrees.
It's been seconded, and that will require the consensus of the council.
I don't know that I would agree to have that taken out. You know, it was, it seemed like there's an awful lot of talk about cutting weeds, when there's a whole lot more involved in beautification project than just knocking weeds down.
I'd call the question.
Okay, call the question. John, you're gonna start the vote?
No.
So this is for the question?
The question's called for the question, the motion's-
The vote on called for the question?
Yeah.
Oh, aye, yes.
Aye.
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 Okay, so, question's been called for, so now we can go with the motion, right?
Yep.
John, we'll start with you.
No.
I'll say no as well.
Aye.
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 Okay, pass is four to two. There's four in favor of Walter's motion, seconded by Wayne, and two against. So, number six is done. Okay, with that, I will move on to reports, and I will start with you, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. The tree, well, we'll just start with the admin committee. We really didn't have anything other than some reports. And Jen Piffner gave an update on the Let's Move program, and it seems like we're progressing pretty good on that with, with all of the actions the city's taken so far. Mike talked to us about accessory dwelling units. We're probably going to see that in the near future, once planning and zoning gets done, massage and it. And he also gave a report on the front yard setbacks ordinance that came about, and we passed today. And also, January sixth, the tree commission met, the big news there. Arbor Day will be April twenty-fourth, so I don't know where we'll be planting, planting a tree this year, Mr. Mayor.
I'll be out helping dig holes wherever that's at.
That's right. And then on the thirteenth, the nineteen twelve committee met, and they're working closer to getting all those windows installed. The, that east side is done now, and there's been some boiler trouble, but working on getting the boilers repaired, so it's hot water all the time in there, so. And that's how I've got it.
Okay, Art?
Not a thing.
Not a thing. Okay, Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the evening of January twelfth, I attended the fire department board meeting and fire department general meeting. I extended to them on behalf of the council and reiterated the mayor's comments regarding what a fantastic job I understood they had been able to accomplish the night of January tenth, with the numerous multiple calls and so forth, and the fact that personnel and equipment turned up in, in the right places at the right time and did as best could be done with a very tragic situation. Also, on January fifteenth, I attended PBAC, Blue Basin Aquifer Committee. It was probably the best-attended meeting we've had in quite a few months. The twenty fourteen water use report was presented by Steve Robichon, and will shortly be on the PBAC website. The main item that I took away from that was a marked reduction in twenty fourteen of University of Idaho's domestic water use. It was down fairly, not quite dramatically, but whatever the next word is.
Substantially?
Substantially. Thank you, Art. I knew you'd help me. It was down substantially, while others were up slightly, as, as we're used to seeing. The exact reason for that decrease has not been identified. There were some thoughts that part of it might be lower enrollment, part of it might be better, just plain better management by the U of I water people.
I have a question regarding that. Is our meter changeout gonna, would it be reflected on this year's report, or is that going to be on the next one?
The annual meter changeout?
Where we've been changing out the flow meters because they've been getting billed up and that-
I'm not sure exactly. We've been meeting, you're talking about the flow meter test, and then replacement of meters that are frozen or not?
We had some that we thought were reading higher than they ought to.
Yeah, they'll be done in the subsequent years, because you can't go back and estimate.
Okay.
And, and these, these figures, Dan, are for the calendar year twenty fourteen.
Okay.
And the, the data comes from well meters. So how much is Moscow pumped in the calendar year twenty fourteen? Pullman, U of I, WSU, et cetera. The reason the U of I is described as domestic is because a great amount, if not, well, more than majority, of their irrigation water comes from reclaimed, reclaimed wastewater, plant water. The other item at PBAC that was of, of interest was a Latah County water right application for, up north of, of Moscow. The county had protested it to IDWR as a matter of course, and had requested PBAC to make a recommendation to the county regarding that application. After about an hour's discussion, we were unable to do so, could not come to a conclusion, and tabled it under the hope that a thirty-day delay would not change things dramatically. So a lot of discussion about what the application meant, and how much water would be used, and whether or not the application possibly overstated the water needs for the desired use. We had support from both the Washington Department of Ecology rep who was there, and the Idaho Department of Water Resources rep who was in attendance also. But the county has protested, so it's under discussion. We believe the county and the applicant will be sitting down to talk about it. And that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Wayne?
The, we only had two items on Public Works and Finance, which were on the consent agenda tonight. Other than that, we had a report on the cable audit results, and we received a thirty-five thousand dollar rebate for not enough money that, how was it? They hadn't paid us enough, so they had to pay us more, right?
Yeah, we just did an audit of, the franchise fees are paid on the gross revenues generated within city limits. So the city limits have expanded, those accounts hadn't been included in our amount, that sort of thing. We have requested the check, have not received it yet, but anticipate it will be here soon.
And on the eighteenth, the Blue Forest Corps met to have the election of officers. They kept the same officers as they had last year. And we're moving forward with a nonprofit business showcase, which will be a little bit different. This is to be in addition to the other two showcases, as well as they'd be the entrepreneur boot camp that will be held. And then on the fourteenth, was Farmers Market Commission, and Aaron Carroll was re-elected as chair of the commission, and Gina Truscio was the assistant chair. And the commission has continued their discussion on possible changes to the upcoming farmers' market season, and they will be bringing these changes to the council next month. And that's all I have.
Okay, Jim?
On January eighth, the Moscow Transportation Commission met, and Chairman Phil Cook did a fabulous job of taking the multimodal transportation plan action item list and paring it down from sixty-one down to about twenty different things that would be, could be addressed within five years, and then continually pared that down to things that they will want to discuss this year. So you have, I have to commend him on spending the time of going through all the sixty-one points and narrowing it down to, to what's, what's relevant to this year. And there was discussion, main discussion about the Third Street Bridge, and some polling that they would like to do about pedestrian bicycle option for that bridge, and so they could do some studies on that. The Paradise Path Task Force met on the thirteenth, and there was a review of the White Avenue underpass. The engineering update said that the, the current bid on that, or the current, current amount of money that would have to be allocated would be three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and there's some engineering work being done to try and minimize that, to try to bring that down somewhat. And that would, that would include all the excavations in the sidewalk and making it Americans for Disabilities accessible. Also, there was a discussion about the Blackbird Crossing. There's thirty-five thousand dollars needed for that project, and there's about seven thousand in the bank right now. So that's something they're going to be working on to try and fund that. Also, there was discussion about bringing the task force, improving its status to a commission, and that will be before the admin committee on February ninth for consideration by the council on the seventeenth. That's what went on there.
Okay, very good. John?
Yeah, on the, January fourteenth, we had the regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and elected officers, Neil Peterson is the chair, Wendy McClure is the vice chair, Joel Hamilton is the second vice chair. And they reviewed- And they reviewed a draft of the ADU, additional dwelling unit amendment, and more information was needed on a deed restriction part of that amendment that was proposed by the staff, and so that'll be coming back. And there was a review of the light manufacturing amendment. That'll go to a public hearing. There was a discussion of the temporary use discussion, and that is coming close to having something that will be presented by staff to bring to the council. And then this afternoon, the Human Rights Commission had their regular meeting, and Ken Faunce was re-elected as chair, and Becky Talent was re-elected as the vice chair, and a couple other things is the Human Rights Commission and the Latah Human Rights Task Force will partner on a food drive, as was done last year, and the time will, it'll, is yet to be announced. Still some issues on it surrounding the motorhome park, however, there's no new information, and so that wasn't tabled, it was just moved along. And the Social Justice Forum, Ferguson Part Two, is going to be done, and the only thing they know for sure about this is that instead of having a panel, they want to have a more, an open discussion forum, so that people in the community that have opinions will be able to voice those opinions. And then the Northwest Commission on Human Rights is going to have a Find the Center Conference sometime this year. It is yet to be decided when, and other than that, I'm done.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Two things. One was the Sustainable Environment Commission met today, because our meeting here got moved to a Tuesday, so they met exactly opposite us this evening. And tomorrow morning, bright and early, at seven o'clock, is the URA meeting, right here.
Anything else?
I was gonna try and stretch it for another five, but I don't have anything else.
Saturday, the seventeenth, was the Martin Luther King Breakfast at the middle school, which was very well-attended. The guest speaker, Bob Butler, did a really good job of doing a nice presentation there, and that was attended by a number of people, very well orchestrated, and a nice event to go to. Next week, I got a number of different things. I'll be at AIC a couple of days, Association Idaho Cities, as well as a airport board meeting. Gary, how about you?
Sir, I'll be in Boise next week as well. The City Officials' Day at the Legislature, Idaho City Management Conference, and the City Attorneys Conference, so there'll be a city supervisor, acting city supervisor appointed, but that's it.
Okay. I would ask for a motion adjourned?
So moved.
By Dan?
Seconded.
Seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight thirty-three, we're adjourned, folks.